Wait, is that where you want it?
No.
Probably in your face.
I'd like to call the February 13th Williamson County Commission Meeting to order. First order of business is invocation and pledge, invocation by Commissioner Jeff Ford, and Doug Langston will lead us in the pledge. Please rise.
Would you pray with me, please? Our Heavenly Father, as we consider your love and passion for us, we are awed by the many blessings you've delivered upon us individually, collectively, as a body, as a community. We pause now for this moment to remember the Brewer family and their loss this weekend. Be with them, love them, comfort them. May your hand be upon them. Be with us each tonight as we deliberate this county's business. Let us keep you in our hearts and in our minds as we go forward throughout this night and throughout our lives. Thank you again for the many blessings you've bestowed on us. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is roll call. If you please push your present button. All right, take the roll, Ms. Anderson.
One free present.
One absent. Commissioner Cook absent.
Commissioner Cook's a little under the weather tonight, and we wish her the best. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the January 9th, 2012 County Commission Meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay.
I would move to amend Commissioner Bain's motion contained on page 19 of January 9th, 2012 Meeting Minutes to read as follows. Propose that the total intent to fund be amended to an amount equal to those funds requested for the Skales Project as presented, with funds to come from monies left over from the Clovercroft Project.
Thank you, Commissioner Bain. Let's get it on the floor first, and then we'll read that in. So I have a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Salafont the second. Now, your motion.
Do I need to read it again?
No.
Okay.
I'm good unless somebody else wants it. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Commissioner Salafont the second. Any discussion on the motion? I see none. Commissioner Herbert?
What my comment was, there was a correction that needed to be made on the minutes.
Yeah.
Get me going and say that now.
Do you have another correction?
Mm-hmm.
We'll come back to you. We'll vote on Commissioner Bain's amendment to the minutes. Any discussion on that? I see none. This will be a voice vote. All in favor of amending the minutes per Commissioner Bain's motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes are amended. And Commissioner Herbert? Okay, we've got 22, four, and one abstention. Commissioner Herbert?
Oh, my correction was under appointments. It had the nomination for the farm woman as Sharon Hatcher, and that was the previous one, but the new nomination should have been Donna Stanley.
I believe that is correct. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Hayes, second. All in favor of that change signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. 22, four, and one abstention. We'll go ahead. Any other corrections, deletions? I see none. We'll go ahead and vote on the minutes as amended. All in favor? They're not loaded on the machine. Okay, all in favor, those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 22, four, and one abstention passing the minutes as amended. Next is introduction and acceptance of highway commission minutes. They were mailed to you. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Little the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they passed. 23 to none. Next item, citizens' communication. We have one, Mr. Mark Shore. If you'll come forward and state your name and give your address, please. And you may state your title, too, Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Anderson, Mayor Anderson. My name is Mark Shore. I'm a resident of the 11th District, and I live at 1138 West Main Street. But I also serve as the Director of the Williamson County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I have done that for the past four years. In 2007, 26 community leaders from across the county were charged by the county mayor with redesigning the Williamson County Convention and Visitors Bureau to be the most effective tourism marketing agency possible for Williamson County. The directives that came out of that task force mirror my professional philosophies and were the key factor in my decision to pursue the role that I have here now. Mayor Rogers Anderson shared this vision with the 26-member Tourism Task Force that Williamson County will have the best tourism development program in the state of Tennessee. I admire that type of audacious goal setting. In 2008, Williamson County was eighth in Tennessee for the amount of money spent by tourists. In 2009, we were seventh in visitor spending, and in 2010, our visitors came and spent their money, and we moved up to the number six spot in tourism spending out of Tennessee's 95 counties. In the past four years, we've seen tourism spending in Williamson County grow by 18%. In the past four years, we've seen lodging tax collections in Williamson County grow by 11%. And in the past four years, tourism traffic to our small, little visitor center on Main Street grew by 132%. We now greet 17,000 visitors a year in the McPhail Office Building. Our visitors spent $295 million here in Williamson County in 2010, and we're certain that number will exceed $300 million in 2011 when the numbers are released. Your Convention and Visitors Bureau is making the dollars reinvested in tourism yield greater results each year. And each year, the WCCV has its return on investment measurements validated by a private research firm. Four years ago, the return on your investment was $6 to every dollar you invested. Improving the return on your investment in tourism through the CBB, we have grown to a 10-to-1 return on investment. The Tennessee Department of Tourist Development estimates that indirect spending added to that takes it up to a 29-to-1 return on investment. I've been a destination marketing executive for 16 years in three different states. I have never had a harder-working, more cohesive team than my current staff. Combine that with the results, measurements, and success I just shared, and I genuinely believe we are the best tourism development program in Tennessee. With that said, there's still an area where we have failed. You see, in the past four years, Williamson County has either decreased or level-funded the Convention and Visitors Bureau. In the past 10 years, our hotels have collected from visitors more than $46 million in lodging taxes alone for Williamson County, Franklin, and Brentwood. The county mayor's task force of 2007 proposed that 25% of the lodging taxes we collect from our visitors be reinvested in the tourism industry to keep it strong and healthy. The city of Franklin has upheld their commitment of 25% each year since 2007, but Williamson County's reinvestment at the 25% level lasted only one year. The county's reinvestment has been closer to 17% the last four years, $646,000 less than the 25% mark. Imagine what we could have done. This fiscal year, Williamson County budgeted revenue of $2.2 million in lodging tax collections, but calendar-year collections for 2011 exceeded $2.9 million. Clearly, it's an industry that's growing. This revenue is great news for the county and certainly a positive indication of a healthy tourism economy. However, this success creates a widening gap in our funding structure, and it needs to be addressed. You see, in 2007, we redesigned for efficiency as a 501(c)(6) not-for-profit. It's allowed us to move quickly in the marketplace and garner greater financial and participatory support from the private sector, but it has also caused us to be grouped into a funding category in the Williamson County budget with the traditional nonprofit organizations. We're not a line item to be funded. We're an investment account with strong dividends. Our current budget is just under $1 million with 25% funding from the city of Franklin and Williamson County. Next year, our budget would be roughly $1.3 million. For comparison, Clarksville, Montgomery County is ranked 12th in tourism expenditures in Tennessee. They have nearly 1,000 less hotel rooms to market, while our inventory will grow next year by 330, yet the Clarksville, Montgomery CBB has a budget of $1.9 million, twice the marketing power of the Williamson County CBB. If you were to compare the percentage of lodging tax formulas for convention bureaus in Nashville, Memphis, Gatlinburg, Knoxville, and Chattanooga, those are the five ahead of us, Williamson CBB receives the least percentage of lodging tax reinvestment. And if you were to compare the percentage of lodging tax funding formulas for CVBs in Kingsport, Rutherford, Clarksville, Wilson, Oak Ridge, Murray, and Sumner, Williamson CBB receives the least percentage of lodging tax reinvestment. Clearly, we are not the best in Tennessee in this particular category. Your CBB has had miraculous results from their first four-year strategic plan, but can no longer promise to move the needle forward without a commitment to reinvest these visitor taxes each of the next four years. I'm asking you to bring us back to the original funding formula of 25%. Based on our preliminary 2012, 2013 budget, we have developed a plan that focuses new funds would go straight to marketing, PR, and sales initiatives. The Williamson County CBB now has a proven track record, and the tourism industry has proven to be a dynamic revenue generator for the county. I ask you to put the Convention and Visitors Bureau on a 25% commission using visitor-paid lodging taxes, and Williamson County can finally claim to be the best in the category of tourism development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have communications and messages. We have some late filed resolutions, and if it's okay, we have late filed Resolution 21226, and that would go at the end of appropriations. And then we have 21227 and 21228, which will go at the end of other. So if there's no objections for that, we'll hear those at those times. I see none. Also, it's been requested, and I would like to see us move Resolution 21224 up, although that's last and other, but if we could hear that first, I think there's a group of people here that have interest in that, and we would let them get on with their business. So if there's no objections to that, could I move 21224 up to the first, and we would hear that resolution first? After consent. I see none, so we will move Resolution 21224 up in front of Resolution 2124. Next item we have is reports from county offices. First on the agenda, County Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Good evening. If I could, I'll have David to give us a recap of the financial picture.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we'll go through our normal reports for the month. Several reports are at your desk. We apologize for that, but we're just trying to get you as much up-to-date information as we can. The budget report in your packet is December, and we laid at your desk tonight the report for January 31st. We just got the numbers. Finish that on Friday, so that gives us the seventh month to look at, and you can look at your percentages and all that appears to be in order through January. The other monthly report we bring you is the Cool Springs Conference Center. We had a very good month in the month of December. We received a check of over $63,000, but then we were down in the month of January, where we will be returning about $35,000. So we still net out about $30,000 to the good, but that was a very good December, and it came back down a little in January. Then the privileged tax report for the month of January. Again, we just received that on Friday, and that's at your desk, and then you'll see the chart that we normally give you. Happy to report that the privileged tax report is the highest January in the last five years, and certainly that kind of continues a trend that we were seeing last fall. We've still had kind of that up-and-down motion, but in general, we are on upswing, and we hope that will continue. A new report that's at your desk tonight, it's on a long legal sheet. If you recall back in July, when we talked about the funding for our medical insurance and being under a new provider, and we were asked at that time if we could give you an analysis of where we were, and we certainly can. And so this is a six-month report through December 31st, and that's a lot of information there, but if you go to the lower left-hand corner, you'll see that our budget for the year is $10,000 per employee, and the cost to date through December 31st, if you annualized it, would be $8,400. So we are quite a bit under budget. That looks great. We still have six months to go, so we're not really ready to make any changes at this point, but we wanted to give you that report and let you know where we are at this point in time. And Mr. Chairman, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Coleman, for Mr. Barnwell?
So we can see what they're doing?
That includes the schools?
Well, this includes the schools.
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Coleman? I see none. Thank you, David.
Mr. Chairman, if you would allow me also, Mike Mattson's here to talk about the zoning and zoning update, if you'd allow him to give that discussion and overview. Mike?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we've been working very hard on an-
Excuse me, Mike. If you'd state your name.
Oh, sure. It's Mike Madison. I'm with the Planning Department.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we've been working very hard on an effort to update the county zoning ordinance. I'm happy to say that we're nearing completion of that project, and we felt like this would be a good time to update you all again on this effort, which we think is a very important one for the county. And so I'll spend just a few minutes sort of recapping the planning process and also touching on the public review and adoption process that's upcoming. Just real quickly, by way of background, you all will recall that a few years ago, the county adopted a new comprehensive plan, and that comprehensive plan was based on very extensive public input and participation. And also, I'd like to point out that the comprehensive plan was the recipient of a Best Plan Award given by the Tennessee Chapter of the American Planning Association. The comprehensive plan establishes growth-related policies and articulates a vision for the future growth and development and preservation of the county. And so as a policy document, the comprehensive plan really is the foundation for our planning efforts and is the basis for the development of the zoning ordinance that we've been working on. I want to mention that we have been working very closely with a zoning ordinance update steering committee, and we very much appreciate their time and their effort and the guidance that they've given. Real quickly, the committee is comprised of Commissioner Judy Hayes, Commissioner Mary Brockman, John Lackey, who is the chairman of the committee and who also chairs the Planning Commission, Tommy Murdock, and Robert Ring. And again, we appreciate the time and effort that they put in. Because of the size and the complexity of the zoning ordinance, or any zoning ordinance for that matter, we developed the ordinance in sections or modules. And just as a reminder, Module 1 dealt with administration and the procedural aspects of the zoning ordinance. Module 2 dealt with the zoning districts and the use regulations, and Module 3 dealt with the development standards of the ordinance. One of the things I want to emphasize is the emphasis that we placed on public participation throughout this project. That's something that was very important to us, and I think public participation was really a hallmark of not only the comprehensive plan process, but also the zoning ordinance update process. And just to touch on some of those public participation efforts, when we completed Modules 1 and 2 and discussed that with the steering committee, you all remember, we met with you all and the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals to get some direction from elected and appointed officials. And then after that, we held four different public meetings throughout the community at different geographic locations to try to get as much input as we could from citizens. Following those public meetings, we held some more targeted focus group meetings. For instance, we met with a development community focus group. We met with the Association of Realtors, and we met with a group representing the agricultural community. And then following all of those public meetings and focus group meetings, we typed up every single comment that we received and discussed each one of those with the steering committee. And I want to mention that as a result of those comments and as a result of discussing those with the steering committee, we made a number of changes to Modules 1 and 2, and all of those comments, as well as the steering committee's response, are available for viewing on our website. When we completed Module 3, we essentially repeated the same series of meetings that we held for Modules 1 and 2. And then more recently, within the past few weeks, we held another series of meetings, this time focusing exclusively on the zoning map. And those meetings were designed to give citizens an opportunity to come in and learn how the properties are currently zoned, how they're proposed to be zoned under the new ordinance, and what differences, if any, there are between the two. Some of you, prior to those meetings, came in and met with us individually to get an idea of those zoning maps, particularly as they related to the various voting districts. And if you haven't done so, but if you'd like to do so, we'd still love to meet with you, and so just give us a call if you're interested in that, and we'll find a time that's convenient for you to do that. So in terms of where we go from here, we're meeting again on Friday with the steering committee to discuss with them the comments that we received from the most recent round of meetings and to kind of finalize some details. And then the plan is to sort of usher the draft zoning ordinance through the public review and adoption process, which will involve, first, a public hearing before the Planning Commission, and their vote will be in the form of a recommendation to you all. And then following that, we would hold a public, or you all would hold a public hearing regarding the ordinance, and then consider adopting the ordinance. In terms of timing, we anticipate having the Planning Commission consider their recommendation at their meeting in mid-March, and then we anticipate having it before you all, either at your May or your June meeting. And then the last thing I'll mention is that while we will likely ask you to adopt the ordinance in May or June, we'll ask you to establish an effective date of more like November or December. And that'll kind of give us and the development community and the citizens in general an opportunity to kind of gear up and transition from the current ordinance to the new ordinance. So that concludes my remarks, and I appreciate the opportunity to update you tonight.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? I see none. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, because you've got a very lengthy meeting tonight, and I would like to come back up when you move the Mars Resolution up, if you could. Other than that, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for the mayor? Mr. Danner?
Mayor, I had talked to you about putting the county side of the checkbook online, and I was just following up. Want to know what the IT department said about that.
At the present time, what you asked me was to, I believe, was to ask, you asked me, as you did the schools, to put our checkbook online, and I don't feel at this present time that that would be the way we should be going.
Can you elaborate?
Well, I think we're trying to do a lot of in-house things. We're trying to continue on with maintaining our budget level. We're trying to do so many different things, and I just don't think at the present time allocating people and resources to putting checks online would be the proper method. Not to say that we can't do it at a later date, but in a 30-day window, it'd be very difficult for me to come up.
Not requesting a 30-day window. Would you be open to forming a committee and letting me be on that committee to look into it?
I think at this time, your request is valid. I'll take it under consideration, but at the present, I just don't feel that's the way we need to go.
Any other questions for the mayor? Schools Director, Dr. Mike Looney?
Good evening, everybody. Mike Looney. Short report tonight about the schools. Obviously, we had a tragic situation develop over the weekend. We lost one of our students due to a car wreck this past weekend. That's always difficult. I do want to inform you that we will be moving some dirt at Hillsborough School to begin the construction of the theater that this body approved last year. And finally, I just want to remind you that we do have a strategic plan to guide the district moving forward, and encourage you to always keep a copy handy. It's a good device. It's what drives our work in Williamson County schools. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Looney?
We've discussed it before in the past. Don't know if there's been any further discussion within your office in that regard.
Yes, sir. We actually, during the last budget cycle, we did a study on the feasibility of doing that, and our determination was that, long-term, we would not save money. We could get a short-term gain by selling the buses off. But if we sold the buses off and went to a leasing situation, if we were dissatisfied, then we would be in the awkward position of trying to restart a transportation service without any buses. So at least in the short term, we do not think it's advisable.
Okay. In terms of leasing, what about looking at an outside company to actually do the busing for the school system? Has there been any further discussion with that?
Well, that's the same scenario. If we have someone else run our transportation services, we don't think it would be a wise use of taxpayers' money to have 200-plus buses sitting idle and not being used. So we would want to sell those buses off, and once again, that would leave us in the awkward position. If it doesn't work out, we would be in a position to ask you for funding for an excess of 200 buses at one time, and we don't think that would be a prudent way to go. We have looked at it, and at this point in time, do not think it's a wise decision. Be glad to look at it again in the future. We're always open to it.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Commissioner Dwight Jones?
You was going to send me an email on the last month's resolution on the expenditures for the $650,000. I was yet to receive that. I was just going to see if I could get that.
Well, actually, thank you for reminding me of that. My staff indicated that in your packet that you received, there was already a breakdown of where that equipment was going to be spent by school. So if you refer to your county commission packet, it's there.
Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Dr. Looney, could you share with us, I know you've been meeting with some state officials and several superintendents, could you share with the commission as a whole what has been discussed with BEP and class sizes and things of that nature?
Yes, sir. As you know, the governor has a proposal to alter three different things as it relates to teaching positions. The first is to change the way the BEP formula is distributed to different school districts, changing the teacher salary portion of that BE to a new number, to a higher number, but to give us fewer teachers moving forward. And so our department has done a calculation. We calculated that we would lose 185 teaching positions. We would lose 185 earned teaching positions. The state has a slightly different number than we do, but it was not off by very much. We do not feel that's in the best interest of this district and have been advocating that the governor make some changes. We have had several very productive meetings. The mayor has participated in those, and thank you, Mayor, for doing that. We feel like we're making progress. We have not received any official confirmation that the state is, that the governor's office is changing their position, but we remain very active in dialogue.
Any further questions for Dr. Looney? I see none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One more. Commissioner Langston?
I do have one question. I know you have been meeting with the state on different occasions. Have you heard anything, Dr. Looney, or any of your staff on the BEP program this year? Is there anything other than what is being proposed in the legislation now that will affect the BEP program and the amount of money that Williamson County schools might get? affect the BEP program and the amount of money that Williamson County schools might get over the next year or two? I know there have been some...
I'm reflecting on your question to make sure I don't leave anything off the table. Outside of the proposed 2.5% raise, and outside of the BEP funding formula for all school districts across the state to change how teachers or change the percentage of the formula that goes to teacher salary, the answer would be no, sir.
Any further questions? No, thank you. Any other county offices or committee reports at this time? I see none. Moving on, there's no elections and appointments, the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion for that. Commissioner Hayes, Commissioner Dwight Jones, it's loaded on the machine, so all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, push yes button, opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time.
Mr. Hancock?
Commissioner Hancock? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Moving on, the first item on our agenda is Resolution 21224, a resolution to approve a pilot, parentheses, payment in lieu of taxes program for a facility to be occupied by Mars Pet Care U.S. Incorporated, as requested by the Industrial Development Board of Williamson County. Let's see here, Commissioner Williams? Oh, that's not yours. Wrong. Commissioner Bain, all right, sorry about that. Proper motion, Commissioner Brockman II, explanation, Commissioner Bain.
I could give a great attempt, but I think, Mayor, you had mentioned you wanted to come back up on this one.
I think that's a good idea.
Mr. Chairman, you want to get your other committee votes, or you want me to do a quick snapshot?
All right, I'm sorry. Let's see. Industrial Development Board, you got that? Oh, okay. Budget Committee?
Four, four, one against, as amended.
All right. Tax Study Committee?
Resolved, they're up.
All right, thank you. Do you want us to make the amendment?
Go ahead.
Now, did you want to make the amendment, Tom?
I can't.
It's bottom of page.
Yeah, on the bottom of page three?
Yes.
Yeah. As amended, and now therefore be it resolved, item number two, change occupancy date to be no later than 2014. The only change is 2012 to 2014.
Okay. Proper motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Brockman II. Any discussion on the amendment? I see none. Is that loaded, Lynn?
No, I can do it.
Jeff says we can voice vote on that, so all in favor of the amendment as presented, changing 2012 to 2014, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment passes, so we're back to the main resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call up with your all's approval, Matt Largin, our Economic Development Director, to kind of give you an overview of this pilot programs that's before you tonight. The hard work that Matt has put in over the last several months, quite frankly, is an opportunity, once again, for Williamson County to enjoy additional jobs in our community. There's a PowerPoint presentation they'll be making here, many of you have seen this PowerPoint presentation, the location of this is off on Crichton Lane down in the Thompson Station area. A lot of information has been vetted out on this particular resolution for this particular company. As you know, many of them are, many of the employees that are here with the Mars Pet Care U.S. Incorporated do work here and on Cool Springs Boulevard. Their ultimate goal, as they told us in the very early stages, there's some, probably about a year and a half ago, was to develop the corporate headquarters for their Mars Pet Care section that would last them upwards in 40 and 50 years. They've identified a piece of land, as indicated, and they're asking for the approval of the tax abatement. Once again, as we have done tax abatement programs throughout our last 10 years, I can say, we never touched the educational side of the tax dollar. Many of you know our tax rate in the county is 231, the school side of that is 129, and we never, ever cross over into our public education funds because of what public education means to us in this county. So if you would allow me, Mr. Chairman, to ask Matt Largin to come up, and he can identify, we have some corporate people here with the Mars that are available for any of your individual questions that you would like. If not, I think we can address most of those through the presentation PowerPoint and try to identify and get on with some business. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, my name's Matt Larg, I'm the Director of Economic Development for Williamson County. Back in September 2006, Mars Pet Care, through the purchase of Doane, relocated their headquarters from Los Angeles area to Williamson County. In October 2009, they purchased Nutro and Grannies, moved their headquarters from Los Angeles and Kansas City to Williamson County. And since then, they've become a great corporate citizen. They're now the 13th-largest private sector employer in Williamson County. They're very involved with local charities, they held an open house in Franklin, their headquarters, in 2010. And they're very involved in economic development, always willing to meet with prospects we bring to town from throughout the country. And as we talk about economic development, especially in this day and age, the importance of existing industry becomes even more so. In preparation for this meeting, I ran some numbers, in the past five years, of all the companies that have announced jobs in Williamson County, 71% have come from existing industry within the Nashville market. The new companies make the headlines, certainly, but what sustains in this economy is existing companies like Mars Pet Care. As Rogers mentioned, this project will result in the addition of 144 jobs, the retention of 613, the purchase of about 92.8 acres in Thompson Station, and about $88 million in capital investment. That's just phase one for the Global Research Center. With us tonight, we have some representatives of Mars, and with the project team, we have Deborah Fair, who's the Vice President of Corporate Affairs from Mars, we have Rick Glado, who's the Project Manager from Mars, we've got Julie Lawless, who's Communications Director from Mars, and we've got Craig Lane with CB Richard Ellis, and William Hastings with Hastings Architecture. At this point, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Aspen, who is the Vice President of Research and Development for Mars Pet Care, who wants to make some additional comments.
Just let them get the technical stuff out of the way. Good evening. On behalf of all of my associates at Mars Pet Care U.S. and the Nutro Company, I just want to take this opportunity to express our gratitude to the county. Mars has been in Tennessee since we built our first chocolate plant here in 1979. In 2006, we moved our Pet Care division to Tennessee, and we're really looking forward to putting down some permanent roots in Thompson Station with this new project. We also believe, as a family-owned company, that the values of Williamson County are an excellent corporate and cultural fit for our company, and we're really looking forward to playing a bigger part in this community. Our Regional Innovation Center will be one of only five of its kind in the world, and it will be the center of excellence, not only for our North American innovation, but also for the Americas, so it's really critical for our regional business. It is also a place where we will be able to create new products, design those products, make them in the laboratory, make small batches of those products, and then actually be able to feed them to our pets right there on campus, which will be such an excellent asset to our innovation process, and really, I just can't understate the value of this innovation center to our business. So with that, I would just like to thank all of you for your time and for your partnership, and introduce William Hastings, who will take us through the details of the project. Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chair, commissioners, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I know several of you have already seen this presentation, so we'll try to be brief, but we're certainly happy to answer any questions. We were hired, our firm, Hastings Architecture Associates in Nashville, was hired about a year and a half ago by Mars Pet Care and the Nutro Company to help them find the most optimal location for this new Regional Innovation Center. And we searched high and low, we looked all over the place, and found what is going to be the future home in Thompson Station. And it is a beautiful site, if you're familiar with it or not, it's the Ferrari property, I'll go to this image, I can't see it, so I'm going to kind of have to bear with me. But... That's okay, I know it pretty well by now. The site that you see that's highlighted, you see 840 at the top, and this is to the south of 840 along 31, just a beautiful site. We've had great cooperation from the city of Thompson Station, from the mayor's office, as well as the ECD office, and all of the planning and design that's gone into this, as well as the state and TDOT. The total parcel you see there, that area that's highlighted, is 54 acres, there's additional land that has been acquired as well to the south of that that's not highlighted, but that takes you just to a nice creek. Then you can see this site plan, and this is both phases of the project built out. As you know, we're talking about phase one today, which is the Regional Innovation Center, which is where they're going to innovate new products to progress the business and continue to invest in technology and research. This second phase is the phase to the south of that image, you can see the two larger buildings, those are the future corporate headquarters, and hopefully we'll be back before you for that one at some point. This is a more zoomed-up image for this photograph, as you can see, but this is zoomed in on what the Regional Innovation Center is. The Regional Innovation Center is a compilation of four buildings, 140,000 square feet of development on roughly 30 acres of the parcel. The building at the top, which kind of has the round shapes and forms to it, is a pet health nutrition center, and it's where the pets, the dogs and cats, will reside. And I had the luxury of going to England and also to Germany to see two other pet health nutrition centers, and I think we'd all be lucky if we could live in one of these facilities. It is spectacular. But this will be even setting the bar higher, is the way we're planning it. I failed to mention that we're pursuing lead certification on this project, it's been a mandate that the Mars family has put on the project since day one. I know it's important to this committee to think about our environment and how being good stewards of the land and being good stewards of financial resources as well. The building, the larger building in the footprint is to the southwest of that is the Product Innovation Center, which is, excuse me, the Product Development Center, which is where products that get formed and tested get ramped up to a larger scale. So it's not a manufacturing scale, but it's a larger scale that they can use, as Mrs. Aspen was saying, that they would use to actually feed the pets on-site. The building in the middle is a, the smaller building, is a shared services building, which is where all the associates from really all over the world that will come to this facility, where they can collaborate and collide and share ideas and innovate and come up with new technology and new products. And then the smaller building that you'll see there is actually the lab, research space, where they have test kitchens and other things that happen in that space. So everything, the whole cycle of innovation, from coming up with a new product to, you know, testing it at a kitchen, to taking it to a larger ramp-up scale, all the way to feeding it to a pet, to being able to understand, that is the whole process that happens at this Regional Innovation Center. And like we said, this is just phase one. But we are extremely excited to begin construction soon, and appreciate all of your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my question is basically from Matt, I think, is he still around? There he is. You and I talked earlier this evening, and it's the understanding that I've received from you is that the current office occupants within Williamson County are not part of this move at this stage. So this tax break we'd be giving is only for the new personnel and the new facilities, and that the corporate offices that are currently paying taxes are not moving into this complex at this point in time.
That's correct, that's just phase one right now, which is the Global Research Center and the new jobs, it doesn't reflect what we mentioned with phase two in the future.
Right, okay, so we're only giving a tax break right now to the newer stuff?
Correct.
And not the existing corporate?
Right.
To two offices they currently have?
That's right.
Those people are not moving at this stage?
That's correct.
Okay. And also, can you follow up, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
This tax abatement is $2 million based on the numbers they're showing here. Okay, 87 million, from what I understand, is awful high, is what it's probably going to cost them to do this, so we will only give a tax rebate based on their actual assessed value.
Yes, that's correct, not to exceed the amount in the resolution.
Correct, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Largin, can you tell me, are there any penalties for Mars Pet Care if they were to leave prior to the 10-years agreement that we have here?
Yeah, that's a great question for the county attorney, I believe there are some clawbacks in this.
There are, there are. There are rated clawbacks depending on how long they've stayed versus the abatement that's given.
Okay, so if you can explain it to me, like, I'm not an attorney.
Basically, the idea is, is that while you're giving the abatement over a 10-year period, the longer they go, the less the clawback would be. So if they left fairly quickly, the clawback on the abatement would be a higher percentage. And then, of course, after the 10 years, there's no repayment for moving at that time. The idea is, is that we're giving the abatement to a particular entity, not to someone who were to purchase from them, or if they were to sell and move on.
So if Mars, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if Mars Pet Care was to leave after six years, they would have to repay what in terms of the tax payment?
I don't know the exact percentage, I'd have to, we'd have to go to the actual documents to look at it, and I don't remember off the top of my head, so I'd be speculating.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Danner?
Hi, hi, Matt, thanks. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
We're talking about 144 approximately new jobs that this program would bring, did we any chance, did we offer the New Drury Hotel tax abatement that's going to be opening up in Cool Springs?
We did not, nor was there a request.
And how many new jobs are they going to bring?
I do not know.
Okay. And then, I heard the speaker say that the land has been acquired, so has the land been purchased already?
It's in the process of being purchased.
Okay. And then I also heard the speaker say that he would be back to us for more, so when they are opening these other phases, they're going to be back to us to ask for more abatement for each phase?
I don't know if he was referring to an abatement.
What would he be getting more from us?
I don't know what, I don't know if that, he was referring specifically to an abatement, or if there's anything that has to be approved by this board at a certain point.
What is the magic jobs number that we, because this company, to me, is not an economic development attraction, we're not trying to get them to come, they've been here for decades, and so this is a, they're opening a new additional, they're growing, what's the magic jobs number that we approve or that we even consider tax abatement? Like the Drury Hotel, that kind of bothers me, that we've got this brand-new shiny company, they're bringing new jobs, they're having a jobs fair in May, but they don't get a tax break. So what, from your office standpoint, is the magic jobs number?
Sure. It really is a combination of a lot of different factors. First of all, it's wages, which a corporate headquarters has significantly higher wages than a hotel. Secondly, you look into what sort of sectors have been targeted by our community as those that are going to move the community forward. For us, it's healthcare, headquarters, information technology, those are the high-paying primary jobs that then other companies like restaurant, retail are secondary. So these primary jobs have a much greater multiplier effect than, say, a Drury Inn would. So there's really no magic number, we just take a lot of different things into account when we look at a company and the sort of impact they have beyond just the number of jobs to a community. And bear in mind, too, it's the addition of 144 and the retention of, I believe, 613, so we're talking about significant numbers, and as I mentioned before, 71% of our job growth in the past five years has come from our existing companies in Williamson County.
Commissioner Hayes?
I just wanted to say that Mars has been a wonderful corporate business already here. Their headquarters in Cool Springs has serviced... Their headquarters in Cool Springs has serviced us so well with animal control and other community projects. They've given food, they've had volunteers to work there, they've helped with disaster relief, they've given all kinds of, of credible things to us, and we look forward to that. They're expanding from a headquarters to an entire campus that will make us nationally known and nationally looked at as a place to come and a place to really share the, the good quality of life and the good business opportunities we have.
That's a great point. In addition to that, they bring a research and development component that we don't have much of in this county, that, that I think is one of the pieces that's missing in this economy.
And further, I wanted, in investigating, I was just interested in how much tax is being derived to Williamson County from the proposed area at this point, which happens to be in green belt. I did ask Joey Davis, our trustee, to come tonight, and he's prepared to talk to us. But right now, we, Williamson County are just receiving $2,092 in taxes from this area because it is in green belt. May Joey come to the stand, please?
Yes. Trustee Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here to answer questions. I talked with Dennis at Link today about this, and there's no way to tell you what this property will go on the tax rolls for because the assessor has not worked the deeds yet. But you need to understand on this, please, that this property in 2013 will be on the tax rolls. Right now, it's in green belt, and as Commissioner Hayes said to you, one of them pays us $803 a year in taxes, and the other one pays us $1,289. So you can imagine within yourself, when this goes on as commercial and is assessed at 40%, it's gonna be a much greater revenue. Plus, I don't know what they plan on doing with the property that they're not gonna use now, but if they don't put that in green belt, there'll be rollbacks on it. I, I think most everybody understands rollbacks. If you don't, I'd be glad to explain it, but there's some money involved there for the county that will greatly exceed this.
Thank you. Question? Any questions? Mr. Davis?
One thing, you have this in, pardon me, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
This in your folder on the one on the Ferrari property down at the bottom. I made one of my mistakes, I only make once a year. It says 2012, that should be 2013.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Called it off. Commissioner Brockman?
Oh, I love those dogs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say what an innovative company this is and what a wonderful asset this will be, and I just wanna encourage y'all to, to allow us to partner with them. I think it's very appropriate that we offered this pilot program, and I'm just delighted that they have selected Thompson Station for this campus and bring on the dogs, and cats.
Do they make horse food? Commissioner Brock?
I, I don't know. I need to find out.
You do. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo Commissioner Brockman's enthusiasm for Mars Pet Care. I'm ecstatic also that they are wanting to expand in our county. But I did wanna go back to one question that Commissioner Ryan asked about clawbacks. We got to part of it, but what I was also wondering, and maybe this is a question for council, what if the new jobs don't materialize? That has happened in many communities and other places. Once the tax abatement is made, but the jobs either materialize and are a lower number than, than is projected here, or don't materialize at all, does that cause the tax abatement to go away and have to be reimbursed to the county as well?
I don't believe we have a firm threshold established. I'll have to go look at the documents and, and give you that answer. Kenny Young in our office has been working on more of the details on that. So normally, we have an expectation of a threshold employment level that is promised as part of that, and in the past, it has been built in as some form or portion of clawback, not an entire clawback, based on the numbers that are created. But I'd have to look. In this case, I can't tell you specifically.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think it'd be a great idea to include that, and I'm not as concerned about Mars Pet Care so much, just as a precedent for doing any pilot-type deal in case something does happen, not just sale of the company, but in case company plans change, so that everybody knows what to expect. They're already agreeing and writing to, to create the jobs, but what happens if they don't is my concern. I appreciate you looking into that, and would you let me know?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions. One, is, is there currently a facility like this in, in the states? Is this being relocated here, or is this new, new development?
New development. We do not currently have a facility of this type in the state.
Okay, thank you. Matt, you may know this, has the City of Thompson or Town of Thompson Station, are they gonna be asked to consider a resolution like this?
Yes, they are. Not so much on the tax.
If you'd come, come to the mic, so.
Yes, they've been before Thompson Station, and a lot of discussions now are because, are waving a lot of the different fees from the Town of Thompson Station as, as their way to partner with Mars for this project.
Okay. One more question. When I saw some of the presentation earlier, I saw some, like, 18-wheelers, some heavy tractor-trailer trucks that were pictured in one of the, in one of the renderings. Can you describe that to me and what kind of traffic and situation we're gonna be pushed from this, or was that just an artist interpretation of what might happen?
No, I'll be happy to answer that. As you'd expect, going through the process with the City of Thompson Station and through their planning process and with their elected officials, there's a lot of discussion about the, the uses and what were happening in the buildings, and it's minor truck traffic. I think we had talked about in those meetings somewhere between three to five trucks a day. Probably not a lot different than a typical office building, but it's not a heavy, it's not a shipping or a warehousing department that...
Yeah. Thank you. I just wanna say I do appreciate Mars Pet Care and the work that they've done into investigating and their acknowledgement of Williamson County as a great place to do business and their recognition of the low tax rates that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Ryan, you've already spoken, so I'll come back. Commissioner Wilson?
I wanna echo what everyone else has said about Mars Pet Care, but I don't know if anyone has thought about this or not, other than that it's, Crats Lane is an excellent location, but it's right at the corners of our 840. And what a great area to, to have not so much commercial area there, but to have a wonderful facility like this. And I do know personally, as everyone else I'm sure has had, has, they have touched our communities with their giving back programs, and I wanna thank them for that. But I just thought that was really unique because we have such, you know, we're gonna preserve that 840 area there. It's gonna be great. So, thank you.
Commissioner Ryan, again, you've already spoken. Commissioner Williams? I tell you, that's what we were talking about. I didn't know how to get around it. Okay, we've got a motion, call the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Brockman on the second. All in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And so we're ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 21224, push your yes button? It is amended, I'm sorry. All in favor of 21224ism, and did, push your yes button? Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty yes, three no.
Resolution passes. Y'all wanna take a quick break, or does Mars wanna leave? You're, you're welcome to stay around, but you're also welcome to go home.
It is not.
That person's go home, it's snowing.
If everybody take, if everybody take their seats. I'd like, like to call us back into order. Uh, resolution two twelve four. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand eleven twelve drug control budget by one thousand three hundred twenty dollars ninety-three cents. Benefits to come from donations. Commissioner Williams? Mr. Shalifant the second. Law enforcement committee meeting? Budget committee?
Five four zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This is a donation going to the sheriff's department. It's gonna be used for canine, canine bite suit. We have three canines.
Very good. Any questions? I see none. You're ready to vote? All in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution two twelve six. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to execute a grant agreement with the state of Tennessee Department of Military and Tennessee Emergency Management Agency in appropriating and amending the Office of Public Safety two thousand eleven twelve budget by nine thousand six hundred dollars. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval?
Second.
Mr. Brockman the second. Uh, law enforcement?
Five four zero against.
Uh, budget?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
It's a state grant fund, high forward domestic terrorism, including nuclear, biological, chemical weapons, with an amount of, um, nine thousand six hundred dollars.
Any questions? I see none. You're ready to vote? All in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to execute a grant agreement with the state of Tennessee Department of Military and Tennessee Emergency Management Agency in appropriating and amending the Office of Public Safety two thousand eleven twelve budget by one hundred seventy-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. Revenues to come from homeland security grants. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Brockman the second. Law enforcement committee?
Five four zero against.
Budget committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This is a grant from homeland security grant, uh, fighting domestic terrorism, including nuclear, biological, chemical weapons.
Any questions? I see none. You're ready to vote? All in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two twelve nine. Resolution for intercategory adjustment for fine arts curriculum specialists. Uh, Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Proper motion. Commissioner Langston the second. Uh, school board, eleven four zero against. Education?
Six four one against.
Budget?
One four four against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
Uh, this is for a arts position and, uh, I'm sure Dr. Looney would like to speak to this, but I would like to, uh, propose an amendment on the fourth where as I would like to remove the word additional position, I mean additional. I would just wanna strike the additional.
Proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bethard, the second.
And I think Dr. Looney would also like to speak to that if it's okay with the commission about it not being an additional position and that the interlocal, I mean the intercategory funds.
Dr. Looney?
Thank you. Good evening once again. Um, in working with staff, um, one of the requests or one of the questions that came up during this process was, um, the question was asked, don't we have a position that we could use instead? And the reality of it is after, after looking at the, the question, uh, we have an unfilled teaching position at Woodland Middle School. And as you know, the compensation for, for, um, the education specialist is teacher salary. So what we're really asking to do, rather than adding a staff, is just converting it from, from that one classroom teaching position to, um, the arts specialist position, the same daily, uh, with a teacher salary.
Uh, Commissioner Hayes?
Dr. Looney, are you assured that you will not be needing that position as a teacher's position?
Yes, ma'am. We will not be coming back to the commission or needing to fill that position. The position was created because Woodland Middle School's, um, projected enrollment did not meet our expectations. So we're, we feel very, very comfortable that we will not be coming back asking for that position.
But we're safe in saying that we won't give you one when you come back, right?
I feel very comfortable in telling you and committing to you tonight that we will not come back for that position.
Commissioner Wilson?
I'm just curious, uh, Dr. Looney, have we ever had an art director before? Seems like in the past, I remember something about, and I don't know what the position was, but was that ever something we've ever had before in the past?
Well, thank you for your question. The truth is, I don't know the answer to that. Let me, if I could, just for the benefit of the full commission, share a little bit about why we're coming to the table at this point in time to move the money from, and we're not asking, I wanna clarify, we're not asking you for more money, we're just asking to move money. But the reason we're asking you to move the money now is, as part of the strategic plan, um, we want to become the best in the nation in arts teaching. And so we have an arts committee made up of educators from across the county that's been doing work for the last several months. And they, they have come to the conclusion that we need someone to focus on the arts. You know, we live in a wonderful arts-based community. In fact, uh, we're, we're right next door to perhaps the music capital of the world. And in Williamson County, we have someone that focuses on athletics. We have someone that focuses, focuses on social studies and science and math, but we don't have anybody to keep their eye on the ball as it relates to the arts. So our arts committee has come forward with the request, asking me to, to get your permission to move the money from one spot to another, so we can have a staff member whose sole responsibility in the district is coordinating and overseeing the improvement of the arts program of Williamson County students.
You're good, Gerald.
I'm through.
Okay. Commissioner Danner?
Um, I would like, uh, Commissioner Wilson's question answered at a later date. If you can get back to us and let us know if there was one, this position before?
Yes, ma'am, I'll be glad.
Just because it would be curious to know if there was one before, why it went away and why it was okay to go away before and not and back again.
Be glad to do that for you.
Okay. Um, my question is though, is this teacher salary at Woodland, is that an even trade? Is that the same amount as the specialist salary?
Well, um, we don't know because we actually have nobody in mind for the specialist salary. And so what we've done is we've budgeted it high because we may very well hire someone with a doctorate degree and twenty-one years of experience, and they would be on the top of the salary metrics. Or we could hire someone in the mid-range. So until we have identified a specific person to fill the slot, we don't know what the, their salary would be. And that's true of a teaching posi, the teaching position as well. So we've budgeted for the worst-case scenario, the top end, and it will likely come in low, lower than that, but I just don't know. And I think the worst thing I could do is ask you to transfer twenty thousand dollars and come back and have to ask you to transfer some more, so.
I guess that's what I'm asking. So will this be enough? You're not gonna come back to us if your specialist is, is a six-figure, you know, person and, and say, all of a sudden, I didn't have enough from the teacher salary from Woodland?
Well, first of all, I assure you, there won't be a six-figure position. But the answer is yes, ma'am, absolutely. I, I'm confident that it's enough and, and it will suffice for funding this position for the balance of the fiscal year.
We should be debating the amendment?
I agree.
Which is the removal of the term additional. And when we get that off the table, then we can come to all this other. But this should be strictly the amendment that we're discussing.
You're correct.
Whether this is additional position or not.
Do you have anything on the additional position? Commissioner Ryan, do you have anything on the, on the amendment? Okay.
Uh, Dr. Looney, uh, my only concern, I understand what, what you're trying to do here, but my concern is that we're getting a little too creative with the term additional position. I understand that you may have a teacher position at Woodland, but in actuality, this is a new position i- in my mind. And if you can try and help me understand how it's not, uh, that'll go a long way in how I vote for this.
Well, it's a teaching position.
I understand.
The person is compensated as a teacher. Uh, well, let me, let me reframe it for you. Um, I'm, we're doing this out of total transparency. Um, we, we want you to be cognizant of what we're doing, but the reality of it is, this body has approved funding for that position. So we, I could hire someone, put them at Woodland Middle School and say, okay, while you're at Woodland Middle School, you're gonna oversee the arts. But to me, that wouldn't be the right thing to do. So I honestly believe it's just a teaching paid position. The only thing that's changing is their location. And so I say it's not a new position because it's within the confines of the budget that this body approved. And so, you know, if I was, and I would do the same thing if I had budgeted for ten bus drivers and don't need the tenth one, but I need a mechanic, I would be making the same request to you because I'm trying to be transparent.
Yeah, and, and I, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I understand that and frankly appreciate the transparency that you and the school board have.
Yeah.
And I think that is something that is very commendable. You guys are straightforward with these requests. What's gonna be the title of this position? Is it gonna be teacher at Woodland or is it gonna be art director?
It's not, it's gonna be elementary arts specialist. It's not gonna be a director position.
Okay. Uh, my, my concern is, is that, once again, we're gonna get awfully creative and then you're gonna start having quite a few other departments. For instance, Parks and Rec, the sheriff's department, who may come in here and go, you know, we wanna transform this one position from one into the other. And, and let me state ahead of time, I think this is a good position following through the normal process.
Well, if I could just add one, we have, we have reading specialists in buildings. They're considered teachers. We have math specialists in buildings. They're considered teachers. We have speech specialists in buildings. They're considered teachers. And so I certainly, um, certainly understand your point, but from my vantage point, it's a specialist, i.e., it's a teacher.
Thank you, Dr. Looney.
Let's see. Commissioner Bane?
Uh, yes, sir.
Amendment?
Yeah. I'm chair of the budget committee and, uh, was one of the people to vote against this as it stood, uh, as an additional position. We spent a great deal of time discussing the situation and if there was another position available. And at that time, we didn't think there was, but it turns out that there was. So I think that, that changes my position. And, um, the reason I voted, one of the reasons I voted against it was the fact that any other department, um, sheriff's department, judicial, whatever, uh, they could not do this. Well, if they come back and have an unfilled position and wanna change the title or, and have the money, um, I see nothing wrong with that. Well, I mean, they're taking on a one-by-one basis, and this seems, uh, like a great solution to the, the problem we had, so I'm now for this.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your support.
Commissioner Ford?
Under the main motion.
Okay. Uh, it's a three, Commissioner Williams? Question's been called.
That's called for the question.
For the amendment, correct. Yeah, that's what we're talking about. So do I have a second on, call?
Second.
Commissioner Brockman on the second. All in favor of calling the question on the amendment? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we're ready to vote on the amendment. It's on the board. If you're in favor of the amendment, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, one, no.
All right, the amendment passes, so we're back to the main resolution. Let's see if I can get my screen back up. Commissioner Langston?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I supported this in our education committee, particularly because of two reasons. One, I think it's a very important position that we have to coordinate the fine arts because fine arts can fit in with everything within our curriculum. It can look at, uh, teaching across the curriculum and other different subjects. And I think a person with expertise can do this and bring just a, a whole different, uh, light to our fine arts department. And secondly, it was a very thing that, uh, was mentioned. I looked at it as a position that we were simply transferring money and not adding a new position. And for those two reasons, I did support that and intend to support the, uh, decision tonight.
Thank, thank you. Commissioner Herbert?
I guess I have a question for Dr. Looney. When you talked about this first, I thought it was the coordinator for fine arts for all the schools, including middle and high school. Is that not correct?
Yes, ma'am, but in, but in Williamson County, we do not pay our specialist coordinator pay. We simply pay them as teachers.
But this position, it will cover, like, this person's gonna?
Yes, ma'am.
Be the coordinator for a high school and middle, not just elementary?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Follow-up? You got, Commissioner Shalifant?
Call a question?
Mr. Williams on the second?
Mr. Chairman, point of order?
All right.
I, I was in previously on the thing and when, and the board wiped. So I asked, I asked those that were?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
That were in.
Previously, uh, be allowed to speak.
I'll allow you to speak.
And I don't know if there's anybody else who was in on the board earlier also. A quick question, Dr. Looney. Could we, could, could you tell us how we would evaluate the effectiveness of this position and program?
Um, yes, sir. Once again, we have a fine arts, uh, committee that is, um, looking at the way that we deliver instructional services to all of the arts programs. That fine arts committee will be making regular reports to myself, and I will be in turn making those reports to the board for evaluation.
Okay.
Did I answer your question fully?
Um, enough, enough. I, I'm afraid, Mr. Chairman, if we go too far in this, we're gonna get into micromanaging, uh, the, the school system. So I appreciate your transparency on this.
All right, the question's been called and seconded. All in favor of calling the question? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you ready to vote? Resolution two twelve nine is amended. If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Nineteen, yes or no?
Resolution passes. Resolution two twelve ten. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand eleven twelve library budget by forty-six thousand nine hundred and one dollars twenty cents. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval?
Proper motion. Commissioner Green the second. Library Board of Trustees?
Six four zero against.
Uh, budget committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yeah, this is just the accounting of donations we've had into the library from the various cities and, uh, friends organizations and some donations, memorials.
Any questions? I see none. You're ready to vote? All in favor of resolution two twelve ten? Push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two twelve fourteen. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand eleven twelve Parks and Recreation budget by eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars fifty cents. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval?
Second.
Shalifant, Commissioner Shalifant the second. Uh, Parks and Rec Committee?
Parks and Rec voted for, yes, zero, no.
Uh, budget committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, the Parks and Recreation Department receives these donations, uh, to offset the hiring and scheduling of referees and supervisors from the various youth basketball teams that we have throughout the county.
All right, any questions? I see none. You're ready to vote? All in favor of resolution two twelve fourteen? Push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two twelve sixteen. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve Sheriff's Office budget by thirty thousand dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Joan, Dwight Jones the second. Uh, law enforcement committee?
Five four zero against.
Budget committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This is for maintenance on sheriff's car, uh, vehicles. Uh, just remind the county commission that sheriff's budget is one side and the jail budget is, is on the other side.
All right, any questions? I see none. You're ready to vote? All in favor of resolution two twelve sixteen? Push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two twelve seventeen. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve Jail Division budget by ten thousand dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval?
Commissioner? Oh, okay. Can we change that or do we need to, do we need to amend that? It, it's just been brought to my attention that, uh, we're, we're amending this budget by five thousand dollars. It was a typo in, in the heading, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but on, on my copy, it says ten, so. Yeah. Well, just in the heading, it's a misprint, so. If, if you'll change that to five in the heading. Let's see, where, where, uh, law enforcement committee?
Five four zero against.
Uh, budget committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
Uh, this is five thousand dollars for vehicle repair maintenance on the jail side of the budget.
Okay. Any questions? I see none. You're ready to vote? Resolution two twelve seventeen. If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 212-19, resolution establishing the 2011-2012 State Criminal Alien Assistance Program and appropriating and amending the Sheriff's Office budget by fifteen thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars. Revenues to come from grant funds. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Wilson, the second. Uh, Law Enforcement Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This is for housing, this is through, from grant funds, is from housing, we're calling criminal aliens, with at least one felony or two misdemeanor convictions and incarcerated for at least four consecutive days.
Any questions? I see none, you ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 212-19, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution amending the 2011-2012 Capital Projects Fund in the county general fund budgets to provide pass-through funding and local match for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program by FEMA and TEMA Phase Three for those properties eligible for the flood buyout program in the unincorporated area of Williamson County. Uh, Commissioner? Commissioner Brockman, Commissioner Davis, the second. Property Committee?
Six-four-zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Uh, who wants to speak for this?
That's fine.
Okay, go ahead. Commissioner Davis?
This is a third opportunity for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which we've alr, we already approved the first phase of this, and this is where we would buy out eligible properties using federal funds mostly, but there's a match of twelve point five percent for the county to fund. When we funded the first phase of this, we still have three-quarters of a million dollars that was not used and is eligible for use in this phase. So, there are more properties eligible. Those have been identified by the county, and this would allow us to move forward buying those properties and demolishing those homes that, to keep them from flooding again. Hope that summarizes it.
Good job. Uh, any, any questions? I see none, you ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 212-20, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, excuse me, twenty-two, yes, one, no.
Resolution passes. Uh, I'd like to thank William Andrews and Floyd Hefflin, they're here, and they've worked hard on this, and it, it's a good thing for the citizens that need that, so appreciate that, and appreciate the work you do. Resolution 212-21, resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-12 Animal Control Budget by ten thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars sixty-four cents. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general fund balance. Commissioner Wilson?
Move for approval.
Mr. Little, the second. Public Health Committee?
Four-four-zero, against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, these are prior, in prior fiscal year, uh, we received private donations, and this is to be utilized in special programs and needs for animal control, and that is just to put those donation amounts and have it in our budget.
Any questions? I see none, you ready to vote? All in favor of 212-21, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-12 Animal Control Budget by three thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars thirty-six cents. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds received from fines. Commissioner Wilson?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes, the second. Uh, Public Health Committee?
Four-four-zero, against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, these are fees that we charge, designated by the legislative body, that we charge for license and regular dog and cat shelter fees, and then the animal control charges, say, fifty dollars per violation of any of these rules, and then this also includes, this is where our drugs and supplies come in also. So, this is an amount that, you know, I think should be certainly funded.
Uh, Commissioner Hayes?
Our rules and regulations, this stipulation- With certain violations, that would come with penalties, and that that money then could go into medical and, and drug related to our spay neuter programs and other necessary medical programs, and that's what this is doing, following through with what we set in motion with our passing of those regulations.
Any other questions, comments? I see none, you ready to vote? All in favor of 212-22, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 212-23, resolution accepting a donation of seventy, seven hundred fifty dollars from the city of Berry Hill, conditioned on the funds being used for maintenance of the firing range. Commissioner Bain?
Move for consideration.
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero, against, as amended.
Okay, you, would you, you want to offer an amendment?
Sure, I'll offer the amendment. Proposed amendment to Resolution 212-23, add the following to the resolution after the now therefore be it resolved line, and be it resolved that the 2011-12 Sheriff's Department budget be amended and the funds be appropriated as follows. Revenue one oh one point four eight six one zero, donations, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Expenditure one oh one five four one one zero point seven one six. Law enforcement equipment, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Proper motion, do I have a second?
Next.
Mr. Shalafant, the second. Any questions on the motion? I see none, you ready to vote on the motion? Is- On the amendment, I'm sorry. And it's loaded, Linda. If you're in favor of the amendment, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Oh. Tom? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Uh, amendment passes, so we're back to the main resolution as amended. Uh, any discussion on that? I see none, you ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 212-23, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 212-25, a resolution authorizing the issuance in one or more emissions of general obligation refunding bonds of Williamson County, Tennessee, for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of certain outstanding hospital revenue and tax bonds, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal, of premium, if any, in interest on the bonds. Move for consideration. Commissioner Bain, proper motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Little, the second. Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Bain?
Mr. Coleman? Come, come save me.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we are always, with the help of our financial advisors at Stevens, looking for opportunities to save the county money, and these hospital bonds, actually, this came up about a year ago when we brought a resolution to this body to refinance these bonds, and we were approved to do that, and the market just never was right during that period of time to do that. And even though we had that authorization at that time, there's been some new commissioners come on board since then. There've been some changes in some of the laws, so our counsel at Bassberry and Sims advised that we should do, do a new resolution, so that's why we're back here tonight. Uh, one of the new regulations that we have to comply with is we have to file with the state of Tennessee a plan for the refinancing, and we have done that, and we've received the letter back from the State Controller's Office advising that they've received that plan with no recommended changes in it, so we are ready to go at this point in time. What we would do with this resolution is just like we did a year ago. We would look for the market, and our financial advisor, Mr. Cruz, is here tonight, if you have any technical questions, and also Jeff Oldham with Bassberry. And so, we would look at that opportunity, look at the market, and as old saying goes, we'd strike when the iron's hot, and we hope that would be quick, because right now, it looks like we could have substantial savings. One thing we did in this plan is we identified a benchmark of three percent that we would like to set as our goal for savings. We anticipate that it'll be more than that, but that's around five hundred thousand dollars. Should it drop below that, more than likely, we would pull that back and, and wait and see what the market did, but that's our goal, and it could be more than that depending on the market. But we ask your support of this, we would pass these savings on to the hospital at this point in time. These are bonds that they do have the responsibility to pay back to the county.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I actually have a, a question for the mayor, if I may. Mr. Mayor, as Mr. Coleman just stated, that, um, there is a considerable chunk of money that, that we're discussing here that will be passed on to the hospital. In my mind, it only seems fair that the county receives a little bit of these savings, and I was curious to find out if there are any discussions between your office and Williamson Medical Center administration in terms of any donations that may be made back to the county in regard to this resolution.
The best way that I can answer that, Commissioner, is that I have had discussions with Dennis Miller, the CEO of Williamson Medical Center, some, um, two or three weeks ago, when we were looking at the opportunity to refinance, um, this, this indebtedness. And at that time, in talking to Mr. Miller, I suggested to him that it would be most beneficial for the county to do the same thing that he did last year, in consideration of some of that money coming back to, to the, to the county side of it. As you will remember, last year, during some of the discussions that we had here in the county, the hospital, and I'm gonna round these numbers off, and David, correct me if I'm off-base here a little bit, but it was about one point six million dollars that they returned to the, to the county, um, in which we were able to enjoy almost a little over two cents on the tax rate. Mr. Miller has indicated too, that he would be willing to consider some of the things that we lay up on the table, and one of those reasons is the hospital is, Williamson Medical Center is, is a good partner for us, and we're, it's a good partner for our county, and they've always been big team players, so I suspect that, that will come through.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, Mayor, would you be kind enough just to update this board on any progress that you made next month or during our next meeting?
Be glad to, and I appreciate you not tying my hands that I, I can't have the flexibility, but I, but, um, Mr. Miller has been very good, and the Board of Trustees, which you've got three or four of them sitting here tonight, um, have not seen this, and we will be presenting that to them if you all vote, vote in favor of this.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Danner?
Mayor, does it make any sense to defer this until you can have, until the trustees can see this, and until you can have that conversation finalized?
Commissioner, I would say absolutely not. Until you all vote in the affirmative, we have nothing to really strike a deal up with the Board of Trustee at all. And number two is, the market is right for us to do this, as Mr. Coleman has indicated. It is, it is crucial that we get to the market while the mo, market is right. If you would like, I'd have Sam Cruz to come up, and there were some addition, there were some substantial savings at another surrounding county, and we just not, we're, we're not in a position, we, I guess we could have went ahead with it, but as David has indicated, several of you came on as county commissioners since the last time we did this, it just didn't seem fair, nor was it really transparent, and the law has changed. So, no, I would ask that you vote on that tonight, so we can take it to the, to the Board of Trustees.
Any further questions? I see none, you ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 212-25, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, one, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 212-26, resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-2012 Clerk and Master Chantry Court Budget by three thousand dollars. Revenues to come from reserve account. Commissioner Bain?
Uh, move for consideration.
Proper motion, Commissioner Little, the second. Uh, Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Ex, explanation, Commissioner Bain?
Funds to be used for computer software support.
All right, any questions? I see none, you ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 212-26, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 212-1, resolution requesting that the General Assembly repeal Tennessee Code Annotated Section 22 dash seven dash three oh four to require the state of Tennessee to be financially responsible for mental health evaluations and treatments for individuals charged only with misdemeanor offenses. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Mr. Hayes, the second. Uh, Law Enforcement?
Five-four-zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this actually came out of a request from Green County Legislative Body requesting us to support repeal of the code act, the Tennessee Code Annotated stated there. Right now, we're, the county is responsible for paying mental health evaluations on defendants that are charged only with misdemeanors, and that's not true with felonies, but only with misdemeanors, we have to pay. Basically, what the state did was give us an unfunded mandate to pay, to pay all these mental evaluations, so we're asking to repeal that, so they, the state could pick up these cost of mental evaluations.
Any questions? I see none, you ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 212-1, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 212-2, resolution requesting that the General Assembly adopt legislation making the manufacture, distribution, and sale of synthetic drugs a felony. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Davis, the second. Uh, Law Enforcement Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This came as a request from the Rutherford County Legislative Body, requesting that we support through the Tennessee General Assembly to make, make it a crime to sell these synthetic drugs that have recently been causing news time.
Any questions? I see none, you ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 212-2, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution accepting donation of rifles from the Williamson County Law Enforcement Foundation Incorporated to the Williamson County Sheriff's Department. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Wilson, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
Attached to this, uh, resolution are a list of donated rifles, uh, and you can see them on the back page, and they're being donated by the Williamson County Law Enforcement Foundation, which is a nonprofit organization.
Very good. Any questions? I see none, you ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 212-3, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 212-5, resolution accepting donation of K-9 body armor from the Bellevue Exchange Club Foundation to the Williamson County Sheriff's Department. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Mr. Jones, Dwight Jones, the second. Uh, Law Enforcement Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
It is for K-9 body armor, it was designed, the Bellevue Exchange Club had raised this It was designed, the Bellevue Exchange Club had raised this money to get this for Davidson County, and Davidson County had their own way of doing it, and they wouldn't accept it, so we would accept it.
We take all we can get.
That's right.
Any questions? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 2125, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2128, resolution to urge the Tennessee General Assembly to enact a private act creating a special juvenile court in Williamson County. Let's see here. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Herbert. Law Enforcement Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Human Resources Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
All right, thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
We have a window in time to be able to ask the state legislature to create, through a private act, to create what now, we don't have a juvenile court judge. We have a full-time magistrate and a part-time magistrate. We have two general sessions judges. That window in time needs to go through now. And in this resolution, the resolution itself will create a juvenile court judge, which in my opinion is sorely needed. But it'll also give the general sessions, give the, give them concurrent general sessions judges. In other words, the general session judges and the juvenile judge can swap out at different places. Right now, we have, both general sessions judges are over the juvenile court, and they are, so basically, the juvenile system down there has two bosses. This will create one boss, the juvenile judge. And as we all know, that's, there can only be so many bosses in any organization. But if the general sessions judge has to sit on juvenile, they can do that, or the juvenile could sit as a general session judge. Now, there've been some articles out, and it's meant, there've been some information that is in the paper that I submit to you is incorrect. I've got Judge Andre here to address this, if the body would feel like they would like to hear from her. Again, I've been practicing law for 32 years. I've been down here a long time. I have seen this situation come from one judge, which was a general sessions judge slash juvenile. Started with Judge Short when I came down here, then it was Judge Franks, and the county, everybody knows how the county has grown. Juvenile services have certainly grown with it, and the population and, and what it'll do for the general sessions judges, the current general sessions judges, Judge Nation and Judge Andre, they will have, it'll pre their Thursdays up for sure, because their Thursdays, right now, they go to, down to juvenile court. So, it'll have, we're not, magistrate would be replaced by the juvenile court, or by the juvenile court judge, of which we set the salary of that. That's not set in the, in this resolution, so we can set that at whatever, whatever amount that we want to have. So, if the commission thinks they would like to hear from Judge Andre, we'll have her address it. Now, I'll leave that up to, I'll leave that up to the body. I realize this is a controversial slash some issue. I don't think-
Well, as always, any elected official is welcome to speak. If the judge, she still here if you'd like to come up?
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. First of all, let me say that I am 100% in support of this resolution. One thing I'd like to clear up were the stats that you saw in today's newspaper. They're very misleading, and the reason why they are is the way that they are calculated. For instance, our juvenile numbers that were reported in the newspaper today, they are actually what we call juvenile case assignment numbers. So, for instance, say Little Johnny gets in trouble, has five petitions filed against him. It is given a case assignment. It's counted as one case, okay? Because it is a case assignment. It's an internal way of being sure that that case is assigned to a YSO, that's a youth service officer. We want to be sure that we give equal amounts to each youth service officer. So, there may be five actual petitions, but it's counted as one. Also, the juvenile stats that you saw today do not even include the child support cases that are heard in juvenile services, because they are calculated by our Child Support Enforcement Agency rather than petitions being filed through our juvenile court and thus assigned to a YSO. So, that shows you that you're looking at counting perhaps numbers based on just the assignment of that particular case. With general sessions, now, the way that those numbers were calculated, you saw today, say for instance, someone is arrested and they have three warrants. Then, when they are arrested, they bond out perhaps, they are given a court date, it's called an appearance date. At that appearance date, they come to court, we go over their rights with them, we tell them what they've been charged with, and on that date, we count those three cases. We also give them another court date, which is a trial date. So, when that trial date comes up, we count those three cases again. Perhaps on that trial date, the lab reports are not in, perhaps the officer's not there, then we continue it again, three more cases. So, you might have nine cases rather than one in the way it was calculated through the newspaper today. So, I want to be sure we're real clear about that. And also, we're not counting the numbers of child support cases in the juvenile numbers that were reported today. So, having cleared up the stat issue, I want to tell you why it's also cost-effective for you at this time to help relieve not only the general sessions court, but also assist the juvenile court. Of course, juvenile court is different from general sessions. They have a different set of laws, rules, procedure, even philosophy. In our general sessions court, of course, we look at things a lot differently. We don't look at rehabilitation like they do in juvenile court. Our juvenile court facility already has courtroom space, already has chamber space for a judge, also has staff available. It's my understanding that there might be a part-time referee, but other than that, it's my understanding that, number one, I've talked to the clerk, she doesn't intend at this point with this, if this resolution passes, to include another clerk as a result. There probably would not have to be another court officer. Charlie Ray Smith, who works also as our YSO director, acts as a court officer. So, the savings would be tremendous in opposed, as opposed to a general sessions judge. If you had a general sessions judge, you need another court officer, perhaps a secretary. You might have to add a clerk, a DA, a public defender. All of that can cost money. Certainly, we're probably looking at about a half a million dollars if we had to add that additional staff plus the judge's salary. So, this is a very cost-effective way to deal with the cases that we have in both general sessions and also juvenile court. Right now, we're there on Thursdays. We, sometimes we have three courts going on at the same time, which makes it very difficult for our court staff to be going from one courtroom to the other, not to mention our public defender and our assistant DAs that also serve the court. There are also days that we have special set cases in juvenile court. So, we may be in juvenile court one to two days per week as a result. Also, I really believe that our families and the young people of this county deserve a judge that can donate 100% of their time for juvenile cases. Our young people today and our families are facing challenges that we haven't seen before, and they really can use new programs at juvenile. Certainly, the attention that a juvenile judge can give 100% of the time to the juvenile caseload, and because it will relieve our general sessions court judges because it is cost-effective and because I believe that it's the right choice for the families and the young people of this county to have a juvenile judge, it's the right time, and I certainly do support it. I don't know if you have any questions, but I'll be glad to answer them.
Commissioner Ryan, did you have a question for the judge?
Yes, sir, if I may. Judge, first of all, thank you for being here, and this really does clarify quite a bit in my, in my mind. And I'm hearing some different, differing opinions on all of this. With this new juvenile judge, will that judge also be able to hear general sessions court, you know, cases? A, and B, then I've also heard in addition to that, if this passes through the Senate, we approve it here tonight, it goes through the Senate, that has to come back to us for final approval. Is that correct? Do you know? That is correct. Okay.
According to the county attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's my understanding the resolution does address interchange, that if we need to, we can do that, we can interchange with each other.
Okay, okay. So, essentially, this judge will also be able to take, in addition to the juvenile cases off of your docket, they'll also be able to help you if overloaded, or if you're not available, they can help out with the general-
By interchange.
Yes, ma'am. So, that's what you mean by interchange?
Right. In other words, we could do that by agreement. We basically don't share caseloads, but we can certainly take on cases by interchange if necessary. That's by agreement.
Thank you, Judge.
Commissioner Daner, do you have a question for the judge?
I do. Thank you, Judge Andre, for coming, and thank you for taking my call today and for helping me understand. I feel like I've been kind of on a crash course, though. This, this kind of came to light and bubbled up today, and not being an attorney and not having gone into the court system, and I try to stay out. It was a learning curve. Can you, just to help us understand the timeline, it just became, in my knowledge, that it was going to go up if we were to pass it and then come back. What is the timeline when it comes back? How long is this judge? When would that judge be appointed theoretically or in your best estimate? And how long would that judge be on the bench before there was an election?
Okay, it's my understanding that this resolution would be effective January 1st, 2013.
Okay.
And then, certainly, I would defer to the county attorney as to the process, and also my understanding that they would come up for election then in 2014. Is that correct, Mr. Maldonado?
I think that's correct. And it's my understanding, or go ahead.
That's correct.
It's in the resolution.
Yeah, it's in the resolution. Commissioner Hawkins?
Your Honor, thank you for being here. I'm in the courtroom, I can't help it. I'm wondering, how is, how is this going to change things as they are now?
Well, as they are now in terms of the general sessions judges or-
Caseload for the, for the judge, and I see that our, our magistrate is here tonight. I'm glad that she's here. How is that going to, you know, how are things going to be improved with this new arrangement?
Well, certainly for the juvenile judge, they could concentrate 100% of their time unless requested by interchange to hear a general sessions case. So, you would not have the rehears. In other words, the magistrate at this time, actually, we have two magistrates, one's part-time, one is full-time. You go before a magistrate, as you know, and if you don't like their opinion, then you would appeal it to the judge. So, if a magistrate hears something, then I might have to hear it again on a rehear. So, that would cut down on the case being heard twice as far as having a full-time juvenile judge is concerned. Also, as general sessions judges are concerned, our Thursdays are dedicated, at least for the presiding juvenile judge, and I'm the presiding juvenile judge now, for Thursdays to be at juvenile court. And then also, occasionally, I have to go out on special set cases, like termination of parental rights cases. Now, those could take all day long. Or perhaps I have to hear a rehear of a custody case. That could take all day long, sometimes maybe two days, depending on the intensity of the case. So, it would relieve us, at least of course on Thursdays, as well as other days when we have to, of course, go out and either hear rehears or special set cases that take longer than what is anticipated for our Thursday docket, where we hear the majority of the juvenile cases.
Will you and Judge Nations come off of the Thursday docket then on juvenile?
We would.
You will? Okay.
And we could dedicate that to general sessions cases as well as the other times that we've had to go out and special set, for a special set case.
I know that Judge Nations would like to have another general sessions court judge, and how do you feel about that?
Well, at this time, I think this is the most cost-effective, best way to serve the residents of Williamson County. And certainly, if this body wants to look at a general sessions judge in the future, I would like to take a look at it. I've certainly tried to save the county as much money as we possibly can, understanding that a general sessions judge can be quite costly, and do my part to take on as much in terms of caseload as I possibly could. At this time, I think it's very important that we look forward and see what's best for our county, and at this time, I think the best way to handle juvenile cases involving our families and our children, of course, our children, the next generation, will be our leaders in this community, and certainly, we want to give them the best advantage of really looking at their cases, spending time with their cases, and helping to rehabilitate juveniles as well as families. So, certainly in the future, that's something that I think we should look at very seriously, but for right now, this, I believe, is the most cost-effective way to handle the matter.
Will magistrate Goffey be, be taking on more cases? Is that, have I got that? Do I understand that?
If there's a juvenile judge position created, then of course, this body would be in charge of appointing that juvenile judge position. It would not be a full-time magistrate's position.
Okay.
My understanding might be a part-time magistrate's position. So, it's whoever you select as the juvenile judge.
Sure.
They would be taking on the majority of the cases.
Okay. Thank you.
You're good. Mr. Herbert?
I work with juvenile services, or really understand this resolution very well. Juvenile Services does an excellent job. Referee Goffey, magistrate Goffey does wonderful. I think this would, they do such a good job, I think this would even make it smoother. It would save so much money in the long run versus having to do a general session judge would cost so much money, and this would be just a small amount of money to get just more help for general sessions, plus improve the quality, not the, improve the services at juvenile court. And I just want to tell you how much I support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Herbert. Commissioner Shalfit?
Call the questions, please.
Mr. Dwight Jones II. All in favor of calling the questions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
This takes two-thirds.
Question's been called. If you're ready to vote, this takes two-thirds for it to pass, so Resolution 2128, if you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 21211, resolution declaring certain equipment is surplus property and authorizing the sale of the equipment. Commissioner Hayes?
Mr. Herbert, second.
Commissioner Little II. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Property Committee?
Six, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
We see these almost every month. It's declaring certain surplus property or certain equipment as surplus. We will do some as a public auction and some as sealed bids, the way that we think we can get the most money back from the county. And as I've said before, when the landfill gets through with it, it's just about shot.
Any questions? I see none. Ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 21211, push the yes button. All in favor of Resolution 212-11, push yes button. Opposed, your no button. Commissioner Beathard, there we go. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 212-12. A resolution to adopt amendments to stormwater management regulations originally adopted on November 8th, 2004 to update the provisions related to waterway natural areas, compliance with state permit requirements, and other clarifications. Commissioner Wilson?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Brockman, the second. Explanation, Joe?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes, or I have...
Well, okay.
Is Joe still here? There's Joe.
Stormwater Appeals Board with six, zero.
Six, zero, correct.
And explanation?
Basically, these are updates that we feel like were necessary since the last time that we originally started, adopted May 12th, 2008 was the last time, although we started in November 8th of 2004. It's quite lengthy. Would someone like to come up and...
I think.
Floyd or Michael?
Joe Horn or Floyd?
Yep.
Floyd Heflin, county engineer. I want to thank Christie Ransom for sending out a memo that explained several of these changes. I think the most, I guess, most important of these was we modified the savings provision. We saw that on the stormwater appeals board, most or a lot of the appeals or waivers we were seeing were on existing platted lots that just didn't have a buffer on the creek. And these people would come in wanting to have an addition, whether it was a patio, a deck, an addition on the back, a separate garage. And were asking for waivers to encroach into those areas and they were generally receiving those. And that being the case, it was decided that that was something that we would allow by right if your lot was platted prior to the regulations. Other than that, most of these are things that came about due to state regulations. The state permit just came out, a new state permit. And it had some things that we needed to, required us to need to modify our regulations to make them consistent as far as like maintaining standards for long-term stormwater improvements being inspected annually and then certified by an engineer every five years. That's an example. And then several definitions and various little intricacies of the existing regulations that make them function a little bit better. So if there's any questions specifically on what you saw, I will try to answer. I also have Michael Scott, who's the stormwater quality coordinator here.
Any questions? Mr. Heflin? I see none. Thank you, Floyd.
Thank you.
Ready to vote? Resolution 212-12. If you're in favor, push yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 212-13. Resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to endorse the update to Williamson County Major Thoroughfare Plan. I sign this kind of by default, so if you all don't mind, I'll ask, move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Langston. Highway Commission, five, four, zero against. Planning Commission was seven, four, zero against. And I'll defer to Joe Horn.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Williamson County Thoroughfare Plan has got somewhat long in tooth. And over the past couple of years, we have gone back through with the assistance of the Nashville Area Metropolitan Planning Organization and RPM and Associates to go forth and look out 20 to 25 years in the future, look at what we would see based on the growth that is anticipated, not only in Williamson County, but in the communities within Williamson County, as well as Southern Davidson County, Western Rutherford County, Northern Murray County, to see what our road system might look like based on the demands placed upon them. Before you, you have a copy of the thoroughfare plan update that was adopted by the Planning Commission back at a special call meeting back in December. Again, one must remember one thing about a thoroughfare plan. A thoroughfare plan is not a survey document. It doesn't tell you where the road is going to go. It's not a funding document. It doesn't get into how we're going to fund these roads. What it essentially speaks to is a policy document. That speaks to where, based on what we know today, we think our road system will look like down the road. And to that extent, this is my third major thoroughfare plan I've been associated with since I've been employed by the county. And one of the more interesting things about it is it's changed quite a lot. The last thoroughfare plan, our role in this was much more, shall I say, discreet. We had each jurisdiction had their area and we had our area, and we developed a thoroughfare plan on that basis. Since that time, we adopted something called Chapter 1101, where suddenly we had our partners, our other communities in the county, suddenly extending their thoroughfare planning out into the unincorporated county, within their growth boundaries. As a result of that, I would say this has been a most vexing process at the very best because we felt like to a certain extent, we were supplying something of the fabric to hold this entire quilt of the county together because, again, there are, as you review this, you'll see some roadways on there that you perhaps are scratching your head why they're on there, but they were roadways that one of the other jurisdictions, be it Franklin, be it Brentwood and alike, had chosen to place on, you know, on the table. There's been some discussion back and forth with these and it really, we really don't show this very well in the mapping system. But part of this is about a degree of transparency in the sense that these, you know, these roads, while we don't anticipate many of these roads, and I think Commissioner Brockman, I spoke of one of these roads earlier today, that will ever be, ever be developed by the county or by developers operating in unincorporated county. We felt like from a pure transparency standpoint, we had to at least show that so that, so that anyone looking at where they might decide to move in the future, they would have that opportunity to know that this is a possibility for this road system to come through. At any rate, that's pretty much all I have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions I might have.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and thank you, Joe, for speaking with me about this. And I have been at a number of presentations. I know it's not easy to plan for the future, and I know it's important to have a roadmap. I think it's important for the public, and I think you've articulated that, that it's not in concrete. So when you see the map and you see the roads on the map, that doesn't necessarily mean that they will be built. I think my concern from the very beginning was that in my particular district, District Nine, it seemed to be a fairly, let's just say, aggressive road alignment. Out of our very small current district, there are five new roads. They call them alignments, but basically five new roads are mapped out. During the process, two of those were shortened. They're still there, but they don't go quite as far as initially suggested, and I appreciate the feedback on that. One of the five is Mack Hatcher. That's coming. So let's just say that is going to be in the future, and I think that's something that has been already preliminary work has been accomplished and a lot of work, and that will happen. The other four roads, three of the four are in what I describe as sort of the Del Rio Valley. This is a very scenic, historic, little area that I cherish. And because of that, I think some of this is a little, it's a little much for me, even now. But I do appreciate the fact that it has to happen and that we have to have a plan. I'm just a little concerned about some of these continue to be. And I know they were suggested by the city of Franklin in this particular, this particular way, but that's my statement.
Thank you, Commissioner Brockman. Commissioner Hancock? Respect, we call for questions. All right, question's been called. Do I have a second? Commissioner Green, the second. All in favor of calling the questions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's see, how many hands we got? Judy? Two. I'm sorry, question's been called. Three, still been called. Are you ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 212-13? Push yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one, excuse me, twenty-one, yes. One abstain, one no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 212-27. Resolution accepting donation of a vehicle to the sheriff's department and authorizing the execution of all documents to obtain ownership of the vehicle. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Wilson, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Six, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This is a vehicle, 2005 Mazda RX-8. It's being donated to the sheriff's department for an approximate value of $8,000, and the donor will remain anonymous. My understanding from talking with the sheriff that they intend to use this in their drug operations.
All right, thank you. Mr. Williams, any questions? Commissioner Daner?
I just have one comment. I'm going to borrow from Commissioner Davis's comments at the Law Enforcement Committee. The sheriff and his department need to be commended for acquiring the most non-tax dollar private sector money and contributions for his department. I mean, we've done canine bite suits, body armor, rifles, fire range dollars, and two cars he has managed to acquire. And just want to commend you. Thank you for doing that.
Well said. Any further questions? Ready to vote? Resolution 212-27. If you're in favor, push yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Ricky Jones? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Resolution passes. Now, this is the resolution we were looking for. Resolution 212-28. Resolution to permit the serving of alcoholic beverages at the Agriculture Exposition Center for an event of the country music cluster. And I may comment that this used to be the Nashville Kennel Club. So.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman. Commissioner Smith, the second. Commissioner Cook, sign this. Anybody speak to that or does anybody have any questions? We've done these before.
Mr. Chairman, it came before the...
Okay, Commissioner Langston?
As you said, this is a resolution that we have done before. The name has changed of the group. We understand they have all the proper insurance identifying the county with this. And so again, it is a resolution that we have done before.
Any questions? I see none, you're ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 212-28? Push yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Nineteen, yes. Two abstain and two no.
Resolution passes. That concludes our agenda. I'd like to thank Deputy Rick Dickel and Grant Buford for being here, also Sheriff Long. Thank you all. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We adjourn. Thank you.